Whatever you need to say today, say it to Nick.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, I'm sure. Of course, of course. We all good? Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. And welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Workshop this morning. Today is Tuesday, August the 13th, 2024. It is 9:00 a.m., and we are in the community wing of City Hall. So with that, I would ask that you all please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I thank you all. Please be seated. And I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Alvin, Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
Okay, so for the audience and those online, Councilwoman Pontieri will be participating in the meeting virtually today. With that, we'll move forward to public participation. So in order for the city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table in the rear. The agendas are available from the Communications and Marketing Director, who is seated in the back as well. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So let me begin. So please come forward and let us know who you are.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Saris, and I'm here to speak about the Flagler Humane Society. First of all, you know I've been here before.
Can you?
Thank you.
And I want you to, I want to thank you for being attentive in this matter, and I know it's ongoing. They had a rebuttal in the Flagler Live yesterday. Everybody can look it up. And they provided data on there. And in 2023, they euthanized 89 dogs and 67 cats. As of this year, from January to July, they euthanized 38 dogs and 42 cats. So just to give you an idea, that's, this year is six dogs a week they're euthanizing, seven cats a week, and I can't get into the other animals. You know, I talked about Gwapa, who was euthanized outside in the heat in July 8th, I believe it was of this year, with the gnat and the heat, and it was horrible. They provided their standard operating procedures on that same rebuttal. And it says the euthanasia room must be well lit and separate from other areas. It must be free from interrupters, free from loud noises, free from any nonessential staff, and free from other animals. Animals should not be exposed to other animals before, during the euthanasia process. And you know, I've told you, there was volunteers walking other dogs, and it was outside, and it should never have been. So half my time is up. I'm going to get into the financial of this. They, in 2022, the revenue, which was reported on Charity Navigator, was 4,000, over 4,000, $4,298,000. So it was overall, I'll repeat it, $4,298,000 of revenues. Where does this money go to? Can someone please look into it? Is there never any audits? They have not done their 2023 yet. And according to Charity Navigator, they have a two-star rating out of four for accountability and finance. It's only 69%. I do want to encourage residents to keep adopting, to keep donating, to keep fostering. We need to help these animals get out of that place, okay? And the city is growing rapidly. You all know that. We need another source of a protective shelter for these animals that's not going to be euthanizing for reasons that they state are true, which, who knows? But anyhow, please keep adopting, foster, and go volunteer. See for yourself. Go unexpected. They, they had someone go down the other day, but they knew about it because they were asking for volunteers to come out at 1:30 in the heat of day to run the dogs out in their play yard, which can kill them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments this morning. Is there another member of the public that would like to speak this morning? Yes, sir.
Good morning. Jeffrey Seib. It's very apparent to all that Palm Coast is experiencing a home, apartment, and commercial building boom. Our city, designed by ITT in the late 1960s, when city planning was in its infancy, the original city blueprint called for a metropolis of over 250,000 residents. This number was based on the total acreage in Palm Coast times the maximum number of units they could put here. Right now, we have a population that is not even half that number, and it's also apparent that we are struggling to keep up with the massive wave of new residents. The thought of twice the number of cars, trucks, bicycles, walkers, everything, more now, more than now, is sobering, to say the least. Running down a laundry list of issues that will require more attention than at present with a massive population increase, we have animal services. Unfortunately, with more people, more animals are turned into shelters. Then we have our road infrastructure. What does anyone think Florida Park Drive will be like with twice or more the number of cars than are traveling on that road right now? State Road 100, the roadwork being completed now is obsolete already. At this rate, the major roads in towns could have traffic jams all day long. As a footnote, our clean air will be a thing of the past, compromised by the vast number of new vehicles stuck in traffic. Welcome to the big city. Stormwater, drainage, flooding, need more, cost more. The effect on our psyche will also be more. More nerves, more aggravation, more rushing around town to beat these crowds. All these things should have been recognized by city staff over the years and planned for accordingly. City planners in some Florida locales have embraced the concept of an urban services boundary, which is a point on a map beyond which city services like water, sewer, roads are not maintained by taxpayers, or at the very least are maintained in a more rudimentary condition than what is found in the city center. The Palm Coast expansion west of US-1, with the Sawmill Branch development now having reached the Florida East Coast Railroad tracks, the railroad tracks should be designated an urban services boundary. Any developments beyond that boundary line should be subject to an urban services premium fee, in addition to regular development charges, which would be based on the expenses involved in bringing city services out there. The fee would be set on a case-by-case basis at the time the development begins the approval process. This could result in more city revenue, and perhaps keeping our mileage rate low, and give us the opportunity to maintain a decent quality of life. It's worth a try.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Either one.
Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. My question today is to the mayor, but also to the city council. My question is why? People come here every single week, including me, and they talk about the same issues, week after week after week. We've got the issue with the traffic on Florida Park Drive. We've got the traffic with the gentleman gets up every so often about the utility and the poles being put up in his yard. Why can't we, if we have the directors all sitting back here, and every one of them is here, why can't, after the resident has an issue, why can't the resident then sit down with the director of that particular department while the resident is here? Because the directors are sitting back here, listening to us every week with the same issues. These issues have got to move on. Now, somebody called me the other night and said they went to the new tennis pickleball racket, whatever you want to call it.
Southern Rec Center.
Okay? They were told that there was going to be a charge to use the facility. I said, "Did you tell them that you were a resident?" "Yes." They said, "There's still a charge." Again, I asked the question, "Why?" That should be free to the residents because indirectly, we paid for that. So now you're hitting us twice. You're hitting us for the fee to build it, which is great. But now you want to slap us on the other side of the head and charge us to use it. Uh, no. Now, I know for a fact that, and I don't mean to put them on the spot, I know Councilman Clufus loves to play pickleball. Why should he have to pay for something that has already indirectly come out of his pocket? So that's like a double whammy, and it's wrong. There should be a residence fee and a non-residence fee, just like any other facility, the golf courses, the tennis, the pools, whatever. If you're a resident, you should get a card so that when you go to a park or you go to anything in the city. I got 24 seconds, so I got to hurry up. Another circus, the community center. We paid for that to get torn down and rebuilt. But yet, our residents are being charged when they want to use it. Why? I want an answer, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Good morning. Cornelia Downing-Manfree. This is the second time that I've come before you to speak to Mayor Alvin about your using public money instead for your political purposes. I understand that a new city social media advertisement about city council meetings featuring you, sir, curiously began on Friday, the day before early voting began. This smacks of unethical behavior. In addition, I was informed by the President of Grand Haven that you had an event that you had told them all of the candidates were going to be invited, and they were not. The CDD email system was used to advertise this. It was very confusing to the residents of Grand Haven. This is a pattern of behavior that is very disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public like to address me at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to ask the city manager first to cover the, I guess, the fee structure for Southern Rec Store, just so it's clear.
Sure.
I'm not, not for the, for all of our facilities.
Sure. All of our amenities are open to the public, but we charge a fee to offer exclusive access. So if you wanted to reserve a court, that would be your court time that you're utilizing that facility. So that's why we charge the fee, so that the resident can have access to that facility that court time. And same thing for utilizing a room or a park, park pavilion for a birthday party, so they can use it at that time.
So the question I'd like to build in, and maybe Councilman Clufus can help us well. So when these facilities were first designed and approved by whichever city council back in time went through that, the fee structure was a part of that concept. In other words, it's not something that has come after the fact. It was part of the original planning and capital improvement and investment strategy.
Yes, Mayor, you are correct.
Let me just switch, let me just jump to the other and then open up. With regard to directors answering questions that are posed in public comment at the podium, I wholeheartedly support that, assuming that the question is related to a single director. Many, many, many times, they may involve multiple departments. But the directors are here and available for any resident to speak to after public comment, and with your permission, city manager, I assume, during the course of the meeting or certainly after the meeting. So if we could facilitate that to get those answers, that would be great. But do keep in mind that most questions are complex, like, for example, there was a comment this morning regarding traffic. Well, traffic probably relates to a half a dozen different departments, and no single director is likely able to answer it fully or completely. And I want to make sure that the information that we offer is, is accurate, complete, and, 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 and accurate, I guess, is what I want to say. All right. Anyone else?
Yep. I would just chime in and say that the idea that the previous councils have always had is that these amenities do cost investment to be, you know, constructed, but then they're operated in a way of try to fulfill cost recovery. So in perpetuity, you know, that they don't cost taxpayers more than what they have been, what they were already incurred by construction costs. So there's a membership fee to the pickleball facility, the Southern Rec Center, and it is, honest to God, it's a world-class amenity. So to keep that operation going, you know, I'm sure James would agree that it takes manpower and it takes, you know, just basically money. And that's why it requires a membership fees. And that way, we don't put that burden on all of our taxpayers, only the ones utilizing the, the facility. And I think that's kind of the consensus we had, especially with pickleball as of late. So yeah, I just want to say, great job to James and the crew running that facility. It is awesome, and I'm sure the numbers are also reflecting that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Hyder, any comment? Councilwoman Pontieri, any comment on public comment this morning?
Just one, Mayor. I would like to ask the city manager if we can acquire from the Humane Society the financials that we're contractually entitled to. I know our contract with the Humane Society does state that upon request, we can get certain financials from them. I would like to see those financials, I would say, from 2021 through the present. I know that they do have very limited financials listed online, but I would like to see the financials that we're contractually entitled to.
Understood.
Very good. Okay, anyone else? So with that said, I will close public comment, and we will move forward in the meeting this morning. And our section E is presentations, and we will begin with presentation number one, which is all other funds budget.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Gwen Ragstall, your Budget and Procurement Manager.
Good morning.
Today's staff will present the five-year Capital Improvement Project budgets, Emergency Communication Fund, and Special Revenue Funds. So Director Carl Cody will now present the capital funds.
Gwen, if I could just ask you to pull that mic as close as you can.
Good morning. Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater and Engineering. I'm going to go through the various funds associated with our capital projects. The first one we're going to go review today is the discretionary sales surtax. That's a small county surtax. It's the half percent of the 7% sales tax collected in Flagler County. It's committed for construction improvement of public facilities pursuant to an ordinance enacted by Flagler County, and it expires 12/31 of 2032. We, it is a, is, we receive a portion of this half percent sales tax based on the state formula. So this here is the revenue in that fund. You can see the, the top item is what we receive annually in our portion of that half cent countywide sales tax. It's just over, it's just over $5 million in '25. And you can see we have other revenues in here and transfers. So the bulk of the transfers are associated with the fair share portion of the new MOC, Maintenance Operations Center facility. So you'll, you'll note that there's one item in here, the water, wastewater, that will require in future years beyond '25 additional funding in order to complete all of the Phase One components of the facility. We are moving forward and proceeding with the first phase, which is site work and infrastructure. And we'll be coming back to council here shortly with that. But in future years, to, to complete the Phase One improvements, we are going to need additional utility dollars, which the current rates do not support.
Hey, Carl, could you just go back one slide? This ends in 2032. Can you tell us, is it back, is it up to the county again to reissue this discretionary sales tax? Or is, do we lose the small county designation?
It, there are two ways it can be enacted. It can be a referendum, which it was at one point in time. If it is a referendum, you're able to bond against it. But if it's approved and adopted by the county commission, which this one was back in 2012, it was for 20 years, they can, they can enact that again in 2032 if they chose, choose to do so.
Understood.
And there's an additional half cent sales tax that could also be, so it could be one, up to 1%. So right now, it's a half percent.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And there's some other transfers in here just based on, associated with projects, a further portion of impact fee projects. We get CRA and fire impact fee. So in touching upon the projects, this, this fund, the primary response, you know, use of these funds in our five-year plan is for maintenance and rehab of our existing facilities, to fund the portion of the impact fee projects that we cannot utilize impact fee for because they also serve existing residents, and then the Maintenance Operations Center project. So those are the, the three, I guess, big categories that we try and fund in here. And, and looking at '25 specifically in terms of projects we have, I guess in the current year, I can, I can just cover what we're kind of wrapping up this year. We had the Holland Park Phase Two, which was the rehabbing of the splash pad and reopening to the public. We have park rehab renewals. You know, the bulk of that was associated with the current work at Ralph Carter Park, redoing the multipurpose fields. Information technology upgrades. That has to do with just replacing outdated network equipment, server equipment, multitude of IT infrastructure. We have some city wall, city hall improvements. Those were the security and, and other safety improvements done here at City Hall that are, are near completion. Fire stations was just some small work at fire station. Southern Rec, that's work associated with the existing 10 clay courts that were there as part of the overall project. And then the Maintenance Operations Complex, we, we had some big costs here. We, we bought some wetland impact credits and then some design service work. And then in '25, we have park rehab renewals. And the bulk of that is, is for lighting of the new four baseball fields, baseball softball fields, the ones that were converted from multipurpose to four. We'll be lighting those and we're re-sodding the existing baseball fields. So that's the bulk of those costs. IT information, that's to outfit the, the data server room here at City Hall. The bulk of those costs, there's some other costs in there for getting fiber to the new two fire stations and, and other IT infrastructure. We have some city hall improvements to, to complete here. Fire stations, that's just rehabbing some of our existing fire stations. The big cost there is the bay doors on Fire Station 25 are, are in need of replacement. So that is going to be bid with the new fire station projects to get some bulk saving and cost savings and doing it in conjunction with that project. Maintenance Operations Center, that is, like I spoke to earlier, that is for the site work and infrastructure for the Phase One of the MOC facility. And energy improvements, those, the bulk of those dollars are tied to the fire station, the two new fire stations. And we are seeking a grant for the community center, adding solar panels there. And there's some, a portion of that cost would be borne by the city, but the intent is we would get our portion back the following year as part of another energy tax rebate savings. So that, that covers '25 and in future years. You know, the, the biggest project is Maintenance Operations Complex, as well as maintaining and enhancing our existing park facilities and other, and facilities.
Carl, just from a, or Gwen, from a budgeting standpoint, I see there's a significant reserve, reserved for way out in 2029. Is there, it's a big number. Why is it, why is it placed out there? Give me an example of what, what that might be used for, or help me understand why it's there. That's the $4 million number. Oh, here comes Helena. Thank you, Helena.
Of course. Helena Alves, Financial Services Director. So in this fund, any fund balance that we have is being allocated to the MOC. So do you have a specific line item that you want us to review for you?
No, I'm just trying to understand the contingency reserve, which is the last item, appears in 2029, but not before that.
So that is any balance left in 2029 after the MOC, right? Assuming that we receive the $5 million in our small county surtax that you would be able to allocate to a future project.
Okay. And I guess, so it's the magnitude of the number which caught my attention. It seems like a large number. So that's a planning number, a placeholder?
Because it's five years out, exactly.
Okay. All right. Anybody have a further question on that?
No. It makes sense, especially since we're spending all the money on the MOC before then. Yeah.
And you can see in the bottom in highlighting yellow, that's the, the additional utility revenue that is needed to, to fund the MOC. It's about eight and a half million dollars.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
So next, we're going to move to the Streets Improvement Fund. So there are two funding sources that, that make up the revenue. We have the local option fuel tax. So it's 6 cents per gallon of gas purchased in Flagler County. It's distributed per an interlocal agreement based on road miles that are maintained by each entity, and it's restricted to transportation expenditures. There's also state revenue sharing. It's a portion of the state sales and use tax collections and a 1 cent municipal fuel tax. So the Streets Improvement Fund, you can see the, the revenues here. And, you know, this has been an item we cover every year. The revenue has a very slow increase annually. And it, it, the expenses far outpace the revenue. So every year, we can do less and less based, because the revenue does not keep up with the cost of doing the work.
So that, that formula was enacted some number of years ago at a time when we were not experiencing the upward inflationary pressures that we do now? I mean, I want to underscore your point. It's like, that doesn't come close to keeping up with the expenses that it was originally designed to do. So we have to find another way to save the taxpayers the burden of having to fix these things because that, that formula is just not going to do it anymore.
Right. And in, in past, there was also an additional half cent sales tax that went into this particular fund to pay for road resurfacing, and that expired. So we lost that revenue as well in the past.
Okay.
So you can see, we have various projects in here. You know, most of them are, the, the bulk of the cost in here is really our street, street maintenance program, pavement management program. And, and that's really the, the bulk of the cost. And most of those dollars are spent on our arterial roadways. We do have some dollars that we spent this year doing some microservicing of residential roads. And we have another million dollars next year to, to do that again. That is something we're continuing to analyze and use it on various types of residential roadways and, and see how it performs for our, our city.
So Carl, this list, and please weigh in. These line items, if we're dividing budget priorities into must haves or nice to haves, I think is the way it's been kind of coined up here from time to time. Are you in agreement that each line item in this slide and this part of the presentation is a must have? There's just no way? If we don't, the costs become prohibitive because they accelerate in time, with time?
Correct. And, and we have deferred items in this budget, sidewalks, paths. Those are unfunded. Median beautification is unfunded. So really, the only thing funded in here is maintaining our traffic signals. So really, the only thing funded in here is maintaining our traffic signals, our existing sidewalks, and our roadway surfacing. So, you know, as our elements age, they're going to require more maintenance, you know, our traffic signals. So it's going to become more and more difficult in the future as well. So next, we're going to cover various impact fees. They are restricted to growth-related projects. These funds can only be used for new capacity and cannot be used for existing system deficiencies or operations. They consist of the transportation impact fee, the recreation impact fee, and the fire impact fee. So the first one we can cover is the transportation impact fee. You can see that the dollars it generates here in 25 is just shy of $4 million. We got various other revenue in here. We have some developer infrastructure contribution. That one specifically is tied to the citation extension. We have a lot of grants. So a lot of these are tied to a multitude of projects. There, I think most of, if not all of these are DOT grants. And I'll touch upon some of those as we get down below. So we have, you know, in existing, current year, we have some projects underway. Beltair Safety Improvements, that's improvements that we're doing from Pritchard Drive on Beltair Parkway down to Royal Palms. That's going to be adding turn lanes, extending turn lanes, restricting some median movement. It's going to help with capacity and traffic flow, as well as reducing some of the crashes that occur. That is, we'll be going out to bid here shortly, and that is one we receive the state appropriation for. Our goal is to have it bid and awarded this fall and construction to begin early in 2025.
Carl, and just a pause for a second. And really, this is for Brittany as well, probably, in terms of communications. This particular slide, or the line items that are here, is this readily available to the public? Because we bear a constant question as to what are we doing to upgrade, fix, repair our roadways? So this is a listing of projects that you're describing today as part of the current budget and future budgets going forward. So is it, this is available to the public, Brittany, or easily?
So this presentation, including this slide, is on the website?
It's on the website, okay, thank you.
And then we have Citation Parkway Improvements. That's the project that realigned Sesame Boulevard to Seminole Woods, and that was just wrapping up that project. Citation Boulevard Extension, that is the extension that's underway currently, and it's extending Citation, we're deadening off of Beltair and extending it all the way through to Seminole Woods. And that was part of the combination with the fire station, being able to eliminate a fire station at the south end of Beltair. And this one should be open end of the calendar year. White View Safety Improvements, we are currently waiting DOT concurrents to put that out to bid. And our hope again on that one would be to bid it and award it this fall and have construction begin early 2025. This one here is a DOT grant project to fund a portion of it. This is for the entire length of White View. It'll be resurfacing the whole roadway, adding lighting, extending the path from White Mill to US One. It'll be adding turn lanes at many of the streets. We know Ravenwood has had some severe in-depth accidents in the past. There'll be that intersection as well, many others along the corridor. And then it's also going to clean up the area at Rolling Stands where there's three median cuts in the median, that has also been a high accident area. You know, as we know from the TPO study, this was one of the most crash severity roadways within Volusia and Flagler County. So we're happy to see this one proceed and move forward here. As we work our way down, then we have the various Metansus Palm Coast Parkway Connector Loop. A lot of those are through state appropriation. That first phase of that will be going out to bid and awarded this fall, and again, beginning work in 2025. We have Old Kings Road Phase Two, which is going to be north of Palm Coast Parkway, where we stopped the four laning in Phase One roughly at the bowling alley or Staples Plaza. And that's going to continue north, just north of, well, to Mulberry Creek Crossing, which is, I believe, Frontier Drive. So you can see in future years, there's continuation of those projects. You know, also, I think I should touch upon is Grand Swamp Trail. We received funding to design the trail from the trailhead on Old Kings Road, south behind the city spray field, Tuscana, and Hidden Lakes, and it'll connect up with Lehigh Trail. So that's another project that's under, we received design funding to proceed with that. So we're looking forward to getting the designer onboard here shortly.
And Carl, just a quick, for information purposes, the prioritization of the list on the previous slide, what are the factors that you use to prioritize those projects? It's not simply just road condition. I assume there are other factors as well?
Yeah. When we submit our projects to DOT, there's different pots of money, whether it's a safety project, whether it's a, you know, a push-button project or a capacity project. And then they go through like a technical subcommittee that ranks and scores the projects based on several factors. And from there, they're on the list, like Gold Kings Road widening phase, you know, the next two phases to complete that widening has been, I think, the number two A and two B project on their list for many years. It's just a high-dollar project. So when DOT has those dollars available is when they fund them. So that's.
And we coordinate directly through the TPO in terms of the work plan and prioritization, correct?
Correct. Everything is done through the TPO.
Very good, thank you.
So a subset of the impact fee is the Town Center Transportation Impact Fee. And per an agreement, the development within Town Center, those impact fees stay within Town Center to construct capacity improvements within that roadway network. You can see in 2025, we have $900,000, and this is tied to the Old Kings Road four-laning project. And this is to look at the Royal Palms segment and Town Center segment, basically the segment from Royal Palms intersection over to Town Center to reevaluate four-laning Royal Palms, relooking at that intersection, revisiting the intersection at Town Center Boulevard and Old Kings Road. And it's just that portion of the project. That was the first project to be looked at per their agreement. And we're currently negotiating a scope and fee with the consultant, and that will be coming back to council here shortly as well for approval. So the Fire Impact Fee Fund, you can see the dollars coming in here are low.
Recreation.
Oh, I was looking at the futures, next slide. Apologize. Recreation Impact Fee Fund, so impact fees here just under $3 million. We do have some inter-fund transfers coming in. Again, in this fund, when we did our impact fee study, I believe it's roughly 70% of the impact fees can be used on new capacity. 30% has to be covered by existing residents. So we use various sources for that. We've used the CRA for the Southern Rec Center in Lehigh Trailhead. We use the Capital Projects Fund as well for those items, as well as various grants. We do have some grant projects in here. Some of those are tied to Find at Waterfront Park, and we have Long Creek Nature Preserve as well with a small grant there. So you can see Long Creek Nature Preserve is a project that has been on the books for many years. The state received money, funding to purchase the land from the county and the state. The state had obligations for us to develop the master plan that was submitted by the city, and this is to fulfill that, those requirements. It's going to be a phased initiative. The first phase is to construct some boardwalk and overlooks, and then there's a facility that will be constructed there with bathrooms and other items, and really embracing the history of that property as well. There'll be some exhibits and other items.
So these last three slides capture a significant portion of what we commonly refer to as our quality of life. I mean, we went all the way from roads to these various amenities, and now we're going through the budgeting process to make sure that we are maintaining, renovating, replacing, or upgrading these various items that fall under this quality of life category.
Yeah, the impact fees.
Pointing it out so that the public understands that, you know, you get lost in the budget process, but these are the things that you go out and enjoy or need to use every day. So I'm trying to jump off the piece of paper and get out into, you know, the beautiful areas of Palm Coast, because that's exactly what we're talking about here.
Right. These, and specifically, impact fees are adding to that quality of life for the additional residents and expanding on that. So the Grand Swamp Trail is actually in this budget that I spoke to regarding that grant. The community center expanded parking, that will be coming back to council when we bring the fire station projects back to look at alternatives and options for expanding parking there. We have some master plan studies, and then Waterfront Park Access, that was for the next phase at Waterfront Park. So again, this is in line with the county-wide Recreation Master Plan. You know, the next couple of years are completing some of the initial existing initiatives. You know, as we reach out in our, towards the end of our five-year plan is one where we will be looking to, you know, collaborate with the county and other entities on what projects and how those move forward and how they're funded. Fire Impact Fee Fund, so you can see this fund here is, is less than a million dollars per year comes in here. It's not a big revenue generator, because we don't need a lot of fire stations citywide. So it takes a long time to generate those revenues from the residents. So we need them before they're fully funded. So this was the part of the referendum that is going to council. This was one specifically we cited as, you know, you want to use, you need to build a fire station before the residents are here to service them and meet our level of service or response time. So utilizing future impact fees to pay back a loan for building a fire station would be an ideal scenario. You know, our current charter is restricted, we're unable to do that using these funds. But in our current year budget, we have various revenues. We were able to use some ARPA funding, we were able to get a state appropriation, we've, we had a general fund repayment from the Town Center CRA. So we have, and we have some initial dollars from the Capital Projects Fund that will get reimbursed. You can see that in the bottom, right? Going back to the Capital Projects Fund, just so we can proceed with both projects. We know there's some substantial savings to constructing them concurrently. They're currently out to bid right now, the construction management firm's putting together his guaranteed maximum price, and will be coming back to council, I believe, in October with those projects there. So the goal is to replace 22 and to build a new 26 down at Seminole Woods. The oak, the community, you see, that's our 100, I'm just going to, that's our 100 Community Redevelopment Agency Fund, that's in Town Center. So there's, I guess really what I want to highlight here is those funds that are in here, after the other obligations that are necessary to pay for, can be tied, you know, put towards projects that are as part of that plan. And you can see, we do have some debt service that will be paid off towards the end of the five-year plan. I think we had one loan wrap up last fiscal year, but then this one actually, the payments increased towards the end of the loan, you know, that was planned that way. We have some inter-fund transfers. A lot of those had to do with the incentive program that was put in place for development of Town Center a few years back. So that's paying back the utility fund. And then we have some transfers associated with some of the projects that fall within there, such as the Southern Rec Center paying that back and Lehigh Trailhead. So the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund, this is for properties that were within the Old Kings Road, we call it South. It falls roughly from, you know, Utility Drive or so, or Oak Trails Drive, down to basically 100. So those properties pay into a fund. There's a loan that was taken from the city, from the special assessment, to build the first phase from Town Center down to State Road 100. So as they develop those properties, their loans are paid off. If they, those impact fees are utilized, and then any surplus impact fees stay in this fund to go towards the future four-laning north of Town Center Boulevard. We did receive state appropriation to contribute to the design of that. We are looking at, it's a phased project, again, due to the length and high cost, but we have some dollars to complete the design of the two A segment, which is going to be Town Center north to about the Tuscana entrance. And then the rest of it will be in the future phase. Utilities, we're looking at designing 100% during the whole corridor, so we can support development. And right now, we're negotiating the scope and fee, will be coming back to council. So that project's funded with five or six different funding sources. Utility has to pay a portion, impact fees are paying a portion, Town Center CRA, the Old Kings Road Special Assessment, and the state grant. So it's a multitude of pots of money, and we look forward to moving forward with that, because we know, you know, we've heard a lot of the Royal Palms intersection and Town Center Boulevard, the intersection at Town Center and Old Kings Road. So we're hoping to alleviate that. We also have stormwater capacity issues with the flow under I-95. So we're looking to address all those items as part of this design project and hopefully being able to move into construction here.
And Carl, just a question, do any, or does one of those pots of money tie back to the fact that it's one of the very few north-south evacuation corridors in the city of Palm Coast?
Yeah, we did seek an appropriation to the state for this one, however, it was not funded. But that is, that is one of the things that whenever we speak with DOT, that we talk about when there's accidents on 100, it's used as an alternate route for evacuations as well.
So we'll make that same request again, obviously, in each session until we're successful in getting funding, I would assume.
Correct. And also going through the TPO as well. We'll go down both paths. So that covers all the Capital Projects Funds. Any last-minute questions?
Just, just real quick for me, just a comment. I think specifically, you were referring to fire stations, you wanted us to consider using leverage to let future residents help pay for those, because they do need to be built in advance of the new residents arriving here. You can't wait and build it after here. And the question I have along with that, are we also doing our best during the development order process to secure either land and/or contributions to build fire stations as an example? I mean, there may be other things as well, and that may be outside of your department, but that's just another way to help fund these things, obviously.
Yeah. It's my understanding that schools, you know, fire stations, parks, all those are part of the discussion purposes.
All the concern, concurrency requirements, so schools, fire, police, all of those things are also a very important additional funding source for us.
And utility plant sites as well.
And utilities. So again, we try to relieve the taxpayer from the tax burden by finding these other revenue sources. Okay. Questions from city council members on Mr. Cody's presentation?
I don't have anything. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Councilman Hyder?
Thank you for the presentation, no questions.
Councilwoman Pontieri, any questions before they finish their presentation?
Yes, ma'am, I have a few questions. Good morning, Carl.
Good morning.
The slide regarding the state Route 100 CRA, how did, the blue box on the bottom there, how did we determine the amounts for those inter-fund transfers? And then in looking at the years, so for fiscal year '24 and '25, excuse me, in an effort to budget for this year, looking specifically at millage, why did we choose to do this in '24 and '25 rather than the ability to maybe stretch it one more year for these transfers?
Well, some of the transfers, you know, I'm just pulling it up now, I'm looking at my backup here. So in '25, we have transfers of the 1.2 million to the Fire Impact Fee Fund to help fund the fire station project. That was for land purchase done for, when Bulldog Drive was constructed. So it was many, many years ago. It's owed that general fund dollars for numerous years. Then we have some dollars to cover some work that was to be done at Central Park as part of our master plan for that, I think it was the Arts and Cultural Master Plan that we have in next year's budget. So it's covering a portion that the impact fee cannot So it's covering their portion that the impact fee cannot pay for, which is small dollars, it's like 26,000. Then we have some cost to pay back the Lehigh Trailhead fund. Now that the project is completed and, and constructed, those impact fees again, in minus the grant, can only pay for a portion. So it's $14,311 to, to square up the math on that project. Then we have the Southern Rec Center, um, project. So that is for the portion of the new courts and as well as the project was completed this year. We know the final dollar amount. So that is going to pay back just over half a million dollars for the, the non-capacity portion of that project where we can't use impact fees. And then we have almost $300,000 to pay back two of the projects. Central Landings and, and the Gables in Town Center for the utility impact fee, the Kickstart Program that, that was, uh, enacted numerous years ago. And in future years, in '26 and '27, the, the majority of those dollars are going to the utility fund to pay back the, the Haven and the Retreat and the remaining dollars on the Gables project.
So I guess my question is, for these amounts that we're paying back, do we have to pay them back by fiscal year '25? Or are we able to divide it by another year? In other words, stretch it one more year so that we're not top-heavy in '25?
Well, no. The, the fire impact fee fund needs those dollars to build the fire stations. So we need that 1.2 million in '25. Then, and the Recreation Impact Fee Fund is, is, in order to proceed with some of the projects that are ongoing, we, we need those dollars to be, the impact fee fund already paid those dollars. So this is just paying back the money that was already spent. And then the utility fund needs as much funding as it can get. So delaying that would just, could potentially delay some utility projects.
Yeah, I don't, I definitely don't want to take money from utilities. I know we're in a dire way, um, with utilities. Specifically for the fire impact fee fund, I'm looking at that slide and I see other revenues and also inter-fund transfers. Are the inter-fund transfers from the general fund? And then what are the other revenues? What, what are, what is that coming from?
The, the other revenues is, um, interest. And then inter-fund transfers, the, the 5 million. We have, I'm just trying to square up my math here. Five, two, oh, seven. Yeah, we have the ARPA funding. The, the five, the fund balance appropriation is, I'll let Helena speak to these.
Uh, so under the grants to 5 million two, we have, um, the 1.2 million coming from the CRA, which is for the fire station. We also have the funding from, um, ARPA, which that number includes about $3 million for ARPA. And the... And then we have the 5 million legislative appropriation on the grants.
Okay, got it. Same question for the recreation impact fee. I see about 860,000 in inter-fund transfers. Where are those monies coming from?
So the majority of that is coming from the CRA, which is the repayment for, um...
Southern Rec and the Lehigh Trailhead.
Got it, okay. I know, Carl, you said that the community center parking is going to come before us. City manager, do we have a date on that yet?
I believe we're targeting October 1st. We're, we're waiting for our GMP to come in September, but we're targeting October 1st. If not, it would probably be the second meeting, but we're, we're hopefully shooting for October 1st right now.
Okay, got it. Thanks, Carl, I appreciate it.
Okay, welcome.
Councilwoman, that's, that, are you good with the questions now?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Carl and Gwen and Helena, thank you very much for your presentation. And now we move on to...
Thank you, Carl. So Matt?
Matt, okay.
Director Matt Mansel will present the fleet fund.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Matt Mansel, your Public Works Director. Have to learn how to use slides here real quick, I'm sorry. As you can see, this is our fleet management fund, uh, budget for FY '25. Our personnel positions request remains unchanged. So we're currently at 15 personnel within fleet and we're looking to maintain that for FY '25. Council has been, uh, very supportive in past fiscal years to get us to this point. So, um, right now we are focusing on, uh, training and certification of that staff just to keep them, uh, up to par with maintaining the fleet that we have. Future years, we'll look at the size and complexity of our fleet and that decision would drive any future year requests, um, for '26 and beyond. Our fleet management fund shows a reduction of 7.3% from FY '24 to FY '25. You can see in our operating expenditures, a decrease of around 155,000. That really, um, shows the benefits of keeping our fleet fresh. So the support on replacing, uh, our fleet timely definitely pays dividends within our operations as well. Our, uh, capital outlay for FY '25 is a reduction from previous years too. So this is, as you'll see on our next slide, um, matches our fleet replacement and new fleet requests from the different departments.
So you have defied inflation. That's kind of like, uh, defying gravity with that prior slide. So, I mean, that shouldn't go unnoticed that in inflationary times, you've offered us in this budget presentation a significant decrease in the budgeted expenditure. So congratulations on that good work.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we definitely work diligently to make sure that we're stewards of our taxpayer dollars.
Well, you've set a precedent now, which I would look forward to for the future.
Thank you. Um, so our fleet equipment, uh, request for FY '25, uh, we did analyze our overall fleet. And as you, uh, can recall from our previous department overview, our overall fleet, uh, is just over 800. I believe we have around 822 pieces of equipment or vehicles. It's 50-plus manufacturers and a replacement value of over $60 million. So this year, we did analyze 243 vehicles or assets that were up for consideration for replacement. And the proposal that, uh, we bring for FY '25 is to replace, uh, 57 of those assets. So our staff has diligently looked at each and every one of them. We've collaborated with the different departments to make sure that, uh, you know, we're, we're, uh, purchasing the right application for those replacements, that it, uh, complements their, um, operations as well and that the equipment is exactly what they need. So those assets that we do replace will go to auction and those funds will go back into the replacement reserve to, uh, assist us with the replacement assets that, that we would look to bring onboard. And it, you know, of note too, it is important to say that, uh, just because 57 items are at the end of their life cycle, doesn't mean that we're buying 57 items to replace. Uh, we had several departments say that they had lower utilization items. Maybe it wasn't the right application. We had some assets that, uh, we had three pieces of equipment that, uh, we're going to roll into one replacement item. And, you know, we're changing as well the, the type of equipment we're replacing to better match with their current operations versus what they might have been doing 10 or 12 years ago. So we do that full analysis with each department as we look at this. Uh, I did want to wrap up too with, uh, one, one clarification. In a previous meeting, it was asked if we utilize statewide contracts to purchase. So we do, uh, utilize quite a few statewide contracts. We use the Florida Sheriff's Association contract for a lot of our, uh, Ford replacement items. We use Omnia, Sourcewell, Brevard County. So we look to leverage all of those, um, competitive contracts that are available to us when it comes to purchasing these replacement items. So with that, uh, that is our fleet FY '25 budget request. Any questions?
So, uh, city council members, any, uh, questions for, uh, Matt and his presentation this morning?
I would just, I would just say that, uh, fleet replacement is a total science and you guys are nailing it. Over the years, I've seen you transition to, you know, completely data-driven decisions. I think that's awesome. My one question would be, what is a Whacker compactor out there for, uh, 19.5? That sounds like quite the piece of equipment, but overall I would just want to say, uh, awesome job. And I've seen a complete transformation over my tenure here, so awesome work, keep it up.
We just put that in there to see if you noticed.
Oh, fair enough, gotcha.
Yeah, we did, we did. Councilwoman?
I'd just like to thank you for a job well done and thank you for saving the taxpayer dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Pontieri, I know you spent a lot of time, uh, early, in the early going on fleet. Any questions at this point in time?
I just have one question, but first I just want to commend Matt. I appreciate the work that you do and your team as well. They work really hard, so, um, greatly appreciate everything you guys do. My one question is, where on this, on these sheets is the revenue that you all acquire from reselling or auctioning these vehicles? Just for my edification.
Okay, so under other revenues, you're going to have the interest income, which has only been significant over the past couple of years due to the high short-term rates. And you're going to have your proceeds. We can send you the individual detail if you would like, but that's where you would see. It will be under other revenues.
No, that's okay. I don't need the individual detail. I was just trying to figure out where it was accounted for on these, um, sheets. So I appreciate that. And once again, thanks, Matt, to you and your team.
Yes, ma'am.
Matt, thank you very much. And that lucky seven, 7.7, I, I won't forget it. So thank you very much. Appreciate all the hard work you did to get there.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Matt. Now Director Doug Akins now presents the Emergency Management Communications Internal Service Fund.
Good morning, Council, Doug Akins, IT Director. Uh, the Emergency Communications Fund supports the use and maintenance of the 800 megahertz radios used primarily by the fire department but also other city field crews. The 800 megahertz radio network used by the city is operated and supported by Flagler County and the city pays the county a subscriber fee per active radio for the use of the network. This fund is seeing a proposed increase of 27.4%. Uh, this increase is due to an 18% increase in the subscriber fee as well as costs. Sorry. Having click, click issues, there we go. Uh, this increase is due to an 80% increase in the subscriber fee as well as cost for equipment that needs to be replaced in the upcoming year. Uh, this is a pretty straightforward fund. Any questions on the Emergency Communications Fund?
Council members, any, any questions on this at this moment? Councilwoman Pontieri, any question on Doug's, uh, slide here?
Yeah, I have a question with regards to the increase. That's a pretty steep increase. Are we contractually bound or, or is this a part of, um, and it's, it is my understanding it's a part of an intermunicipality or something we're involved in with the county? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we can prevent this type of increase in the future and whether we have any control over this.
That's correct. This is part of the inter-local agreement we have with Flagler County for the, uh, use of the network. And we meet with them regularly to discuss, uh, issues ongoing with the network. And, uh, we're talking through, trying to update, uh, this agreement with them.
Okay, yeah, I would just like to make sure that we have all affected parties involved in those communications. So whether that's fire, police, um, obviously us, the county, whomever else. I, I think all parties need to be a part of this discussion to make sure we're, we're making a sound decision because essentially I, I feel like we don't really have control over these types of increases or the level of service that we're receiving. And I don't like that since these are taxpayer dollars. So if we can just make sure that as we're renegotiating these contracts and relooking at this, um, this kind of deal that we have, that we have all affected parties involved and make sure all stakeholders, um, can contribute to that discussion and those decisions.
Yes, ma'am. As you mentioned, we're not the only users of this, uh, radio network. And, and those parties do come to the table when we have discussions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have service level agreements in place with the county for the 800 megahertz system?
I believe they're part of the, uh, inter-local agreement.
Understood, yep. And that, and I was just going to touch base on that. This, this is, we have an agreed level of service. This is to keep operations at that agreed level of service, which would be ECLAT compliant, right?
Correct, the, the, the cost is for the operations and support of the network.
Got it, okay.
Not, not directly related to Councilwoman Pontieri's question, but do we, in the budgeting process, or should we have a line item, which I guess I would call it obsolescence? So, I mean, everything we buy is going to have a relatively short timeline as we go out, even five years. I'm assuming some of your equipment, at the rate that technology improves and increases, becomes outdated within a five-year CIP plan. So do we account for that in any way? Do we build a reserve against this obsolescence?
Okay, so yes, for the Emergency Communications Fund, you will see that the internal allocations are about 478,000. And then your contract with the county is the 305,000, right? Our operating expenditures plus some, uh, equipment, um, repairs. And then your replacement reserves, the 183,000. So every two years, we sit down again with IT and the fire department to make sure that what we're saving is kind of on target to what the costs are and we adjust our allocation up or down.
All right, thank you. I appreciate knowing that, very good. Well, thank you all for your presentation. I think that concludes city council member questions. Is there more to the presentation or was that the last? There's more, okay, because we'll do public comment when we get to the end of your presentation.
Okay, so next we're going to move to the remaining funds. So first we have the Community Development Block Grant Funds. They account for several programs, including housing rehab assistance to the community. Community Development presented to city council on August 6th, the items that are included in the CDBG plan. And this is the budget to support the annual plan as approved by council. So this is the balance that's left in the Neighborhood Stabilization Fund. The Community Development Staff is currently working with the respective state agencies to transfer this to the Community Development Block Grant Program. So the Police Education Fund is used for specialized deputy training. These funds are collected from fines within the city through the clerka court and then submitted to the sheriff's office. The Special Events Fund is funded by the recycling revenue from our solid waste contract. There is a 1% increase from fiscal year 2024. Some of the current events planned from these funds are the Holiday Parade, Arbor Day, July 4th fireworks, the tree lighting ceremony. Usage of this fund helps continue to provide quality events and programs for the residents of Palm Coast.
Gwen, if I could just ask a question there with regard to events. It's my understanding that Town Center as an example, the event calendar is, is, is full. We're not expecting to be able to add many new events. Maybe they would change, but are, are we pretty full up there? Because I'm thinking long-term in terms of how much this fund will grow, but there's not a lot of room for new events, right?
This is the city's events that we put on as an organization, but we do, um, have the availability for private groups and individuals to utilize Town Center. That schedule is not completely booked up.
The private side?
Correct.
But the city side, we're, are we maxed out? I'm just thinking about how this fund would need to grow in the future.
Yes, we're, we're good with the staff that we have and what signature to Palm Coast. We feel that we have a good flavor for all of the events in this budget.
Thank you.
So the Disaster Reserve Fund is used to account for emergency response, typically events subject to the federal assistance. The federal government declares a state of emergency and makes available funding to local governments at a certain reimbursement percentage. City council has established a reserve to mitigate the potential cash flow issues that would be created between the occurrence and the actual reimbursement from FEMA. So we, there is no budget for fiscal year 2025. We're going to keep the hurricanes away.
So, so just describe this fund so it's a little clearer to the public. The reason we have the fund is to bridge the gap between the day our money stops flowing in because of a, a, a catastrophic event and when government money would be coming to us to continue to support our operation.
That is correct. It's also on a reimbursement basis, uh, percentages. So typically 75% comes from the federal, 12 and a half comes from the state. The other 12 and a half is a responsibility of the local entities. So you want to make sure that you can provide for that local match, if you want to call it a local match.
Knock on wood. We've never had to tap that reserve, right?
Oh, we have used the Disaster Reserve Fund for every major event that we have had.
We've actually, uh, taken money from that fund to help get us through until, uh, the other resource became available.
That is correct. So when hurricane is activated, we activate our contracts, whether it be debris removal, whether it be, uh, wastewater, the, the pumping contract, right? And those, those expenditures are paid from the disaster. And those, those expenditures are paid from the Disaster Reserve Fund. They are not allocated to the individual departments. And as we receive funding from the respective agencies, they go replenish the Disaster Reserve Fund.
So the due date for those services is well before the actual?
Yes, that is correct.
Money's come from FEMA or wherever they're gonna come from?
Absolutely.
But FEMA pays us back so quickly, you barely even notice that it's gone, right?
If you're gonna make a joke, you gotta make sure everybody gets, understands that it's a joke.
Sarcasm on.
That is correct.
Okay, so the American Rescue Plan Grant is providing partial funding for three projects, to include the London Waterway Expansion, Fire Station 22 Replacement, and the Water Treatment Plant One, Old Kings Road Force Main Edition. These funds need to be obligated by the end of this calendar year and expended by December 31st, 2026. So the Health Insurance Fund has a budget of $9.2 million for fiscal year 2025, an increase of $1.4 million from fiscal year 2024. This budget accounts for costs related to our employees' health benefits, includes claims, admin fees, stop-loss insurance, wellness programs, and other related expenses. Council received a detailed presentation on the Health Insurance Fund on June 25th, and this is the budget to support the benefits outlined in that. So in closing, we want to remind the public, we set up a fiscal year 2025 budget preparation link on the city's website. This is where we post all of our presentations and any supporting documentation. We will be back on August 27th to present the budget as a whole and review in preparation for the first public hearing on Thursday, September 5th. This concludes our presentation.
Glenn, thank you, and Helena, thank you, and all the others that have presented this morning. So this presentation, I would challenge myself, of course, city council members and the public. When I hear words like audit and belt tightening and other descriptors like that, I would say you have just presented the line items. And those would be the numbers to question. And I would welcome any questions on any one of those line items. If someone were to suggest that there is a significant savings there, I would love for them to share with me what that might be. Because I am looking high and low and with a magnifying glass to find them. And we'll continue to do that due diligently up until the time we vote on the budget.
I greatly appreciate the presentation. The one thing that I would also note is that the rising insurance costs, it stinks. Because there is almost a 19% increase in our costs to insure our, our staff. And that is something that has to come from somewhere. And it's a statewide issue, and I think it deserves attention from the top down. Because not only are we all individually impacted by our insurance rates, but now also because we are being fiscally prudent and we are trying to have a balanced budget with, you know, not raise taxes. We have to find that insurance increase from somewhere. So it's hitting us individually, but then also decreasing the services that we can render as a city. So just to make sure we have attention on that and, you know, keep demanding from the top down that these insurance costs are hitting everybody, including our municipalities.
And, and to your point, I mean, that needs to be at the very top of our lobby list. And when you mentioned top down, so that Tallahassee hears us loud and clear in terms of this is just not sustainable. Okay, thank you for that. Councilwoman Pontieri, any final questions before I open us up to the public?
Just to echo what both you and Councilman Clufus had to say, and also want to thank staff for the hard work during this budget cycle.
Very good. I thank the public for being, for being patient with us this morning. Are there any questions for me regarding the presentation that we have just received? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. And we move on to our next agenda item, which will be a presentation, the Alternative Funding for Arts, Culture, and History.
Well, good morning, Mayor and City Council. James Hurst, Director of Parks and Recreation. You have the pleasure for, for the next three items I will be presenting. I'd just like to also thank our guest for coming today. So the first part is the Alternative Funding for Arts, Culture, and History. This is part of your council priority, which we will get to in the next slide. And then I'll be, I'll be presenting some initiatives that we have identified to help expand the arts, culture, and history initiatives. So council priority, objective 11, is to identify a dedicated funding source for arts, culture, historical activities. The strategy is the city of Palm Coast currently collaborates with the local organization and promotes citywide activities involving arts and history. To properly expand the city's art, cultural, and history initiatives, funding options will need to be identified. Before we get into the slides on the funding initiatives, I just wanted to share some of the awesome programs and events we do with our partners here within the city. A couple of them are behind me right now. And also just to kind of put in a plug for Thursday, August 29th, we have the Second Constance Series at the stage. The band is Soulfire. Hopefully, we get a great turnout like the first one. We had over 700 people attend. So that was really fun, really awesome to see, and I know everyone had a great time. So the first initiative we identified was the Percentage of Art Ordinance. So this would be passing an ordinance for the percentage for art. And it encompasses a percentage between 0.5 to 2% of CIP per year for commissioning of public artworks, which will usually be sited in, on, or adjacent to the building or project being constructed. Some of the benefits, benefits for this initiative is to, it can provide a mechanism for obtaining funds from a broad range of city agency and departments. It can provide an opportunity to work with and introduce art to many city agencies and many different types of projects in many locations citywide. Part of your packet today, we actually had quite a few cities and what they kind of do with their percentage of art ordinances. But in this slide here, I just did a few examples. The first one is the city of Orlando. They have an ordinance that estimates for the construction or renovation of capital projects. And all requests for authorization or appropriations for such projects shall include the amount for a public art fund equal to 1% of the total estimated cost of the project. The second one I have is the city of Sarasota. This is a property owner or developer who applies to the city for building permits to construct or make improvements that exceed $1 million in construction value. This, their ordinance applies to multi-dwelling structures, mixed-use development, and commercial buildings located within the city. Owners and developers are required to do one of the following, which is really cool, is to either contribute an amount equal to one and a half of 1% of the construction cost to the public art fund, provide public art on their development site, and/or provide public art in a public place on property other than zoning like proposed for development. So any other city area or building or structure. We did a bit, a little bit of calculations. We, if we were to go this route, just from commercial buildings only in the last 12 months, with a half a percent, we could be, we could look at a $978,000 contributing to an art fund, just in our city ourselves. So the next slide is the non-percent for art sources. So these are some cities that do other ways to promote the arts and contribute to their art funds. So Houston, Texas, they provide a percentage on the hotel motel tax. New Orleans, they do public arts. They fund their public art projects through partnership between the public and private sectors. The city, local, and state government agency and nonprofit organizations help fund their public art program. Phoenix goes through the general purpose funds, public art funds, and state lottery revenue. San Antonio uses a design enhancement program. I'm not really too familiar with this one, but is made, this DEP program is maintained by an art allowance and budgets that are identified and developed by each project design team. And then in San Diego, they also use the hotel motel tax. Another initiative is a bond referendum. This is, a great example of this is just down south of us, Volusia County Echo Program. This was a grassroots, grassroots initiative, which resulted in approval of a city, of the referendum for the county. It was added to the ballot in 2000 for 20 years and was just approved, reapprived in 2020 for another 20 years. This Echo Program provides a fund, the finance acquisition, restoration, construction, or improvement of projects to be used for environmental, cultural, historical, and outdoor recreation purposes. This really does, they use this to enhance the quality of life for residents of Volusia County and the local cities around that, in that county. You can ask up to a maximum of $600,000 and a minimum of $12,500, and it does require a match for this, for this grant. And then it is actually funded through their property, annual property tax. And according to their website, it was 0.2 of the mileage rate, and that's how it was funded. Our last initiative is the solar energy. So this is just from the Southern Recreation Center. So we will benefit from a 30% solar direct pay from our initial investment. I'll get to the numbers next. It's quite a bit of numbers. But this adjustment will shorten our return on the investment. Our ROI period is about 6.6, 7 years. And then after this period, our annual savings could be allocated to an art fund. Kyle mentioned it earlier. The community center is also, again, some solar panels, and this could help. Also, you, this could also help us invest into the public art fund. And then also, we have some EV charges at the Southern Rec Center. We, and here at City Hall, this additional funding could be used to be dedicated to an art fund. It's very minimal. It's about 165 average a month. But if you bear with me, I do have some numbers just for the 30% direct pay and just want to identify our savings. So we're estimated at a savings of $11,777 a year. Our initial investment was at $239,000. With that 30% solar direct pay, we will be returned $71,000. And so our net investment lower to $167,000. So that, and then that gets us to our 6.6, 7 years of when we'll get return of our investment. And then after that, we should see an annual saving of $11,777, which then could be used to the art fund. Some initiatives that we are planning as we speak, we are looking to bring back the Arts and Public Places Committee. I think Nancy was part of this. If I'm not, I'm sorry, Nancy. But it was established in October of 2011. It was an ad hoc subcommittee under the Beautification Environmental Advisory Committee. And then they have a liaison that reports directly to this committee from the BEAC. It consisted of seven members. A lot of, many of those members were art professionals or art enthusiasts in this, in the, in the city. And their duties were to evaluate the appropriateness, color, style, and materials of the artwork. They coordinate with the artists to provide the parks team with information needed for installation. The Arts Commission then would present the piece of art to the BEAC of the Advisory Committee. And then the Parks Team ensures that all the pieces applied with city policy, building codes, and reviews the maintenance cost and every, and location of where it can be put. So this is something that we are planning right now to bring back. I think it's on set at about three or four years ago, or five years ago. So this is somewhere really enthusiastic of bringing, bringing back to, to the city. At the request of City Council, we did two options of separating the arts and culture and history from Parks and Recreation to its own department. Option one here is the creation of a new department. It would consist of an Arts and Culture Director, a supervisor, and a part-time recreation leader of the arts and culture. They would be, they would oversee the stage at Town Center. They would see the operations of all the programs, events at the stage. They would encompass the costs of some of the maintenance at the stage. But they also will then be in charge of the grants that we will be talking about in the next couple of items. And then for option one, with a director supervised part-time staff and some operational expenditures, we would look at a budget of about, estimated budget of $539,762. Option two, oops, would be to re-categorize arts and culture as a separate division under the Parks and Recreation structure. This is part of our Parks and Recreation five-year plan. This, this division of Parks and Recreation would report to the existing deputy director, but then also have a recreation manager of arts and culture, a recreation coordinator, and then also a part-time, part-time recreation leader of the arts and culture. Little bit of a savings, some of the operation would stay under Parks and Recreation. So utilities, electricity, maintenance, things like that would stay under Parks and Recreation. If it was to go with option two, we would then, but they would also oversee the, the grants in this. And we saw a little bit of a savings, estimated of about $450,164. I know I threw a lot of information. So today's presentation was really just to kind of look at the council priority, have a discussion, and then staff could take any direction from City Council to move forward with any of these initiatives if, if chosen.
I have to take some time and compose some questions because I'm not, I'm not able to identify the pros and cons of the two different options easily. I don't know how the rest of City Council feels. Are any one of those options clearly favorable to any one or each of you?
So I think either of those options are favorable to the cultural arts movement here. But my question would be, are we able to implement something like you showed earlier on in the presentation that is impacting to basically the development of our community? The 1% with a max cap of X number of dollars that development over $1 million contributes into this type of fund? And I think you said something along the lines of like $600,000 over, was that the number?
Uh, $978,000.
Gotcha. And if we looked on a long enough timeline, is that pretty consistent? As far as repetition, like would there be a recurring revenue source there? Because then all of a sudden, that relieves the burden of those further options. If we can use dollars that are collected from development over $1 million dedicated to a cultural arts program, it seems like those options become much more palatable. I think that's for a discussion for our council. Because I would love to see a dedicated portion of development over $1 million go to enriching the arts. But then number two, I think the solar dedication, the revenues that we're gonna be saving and realizing from the solar installations, I would be super interested in dedicating those to what I think we're gonna be hearing in the next couple of presentations, whether or not it's for scholarships or something for the cultural arts program. I think earmarking those dollars is something that we can do today. And it can have a long-lasting impact, especially if we continue to put solar as a priority into the forefront of our building, construction, and existing buildings, retrofitting them. I think that could actually make an impactful difference in the amount of money that we're able to give to our community.
Councilwoman, any comment on this?
Yes, absolutely. I kind of like to piggyback on what Councilmember Clufus has said. And I would definitely like to see where we can find more growth in revenues that can go towards our cultural arts programs. I do believe that they deserve more and they deserve the funds so that they're able to do more in the community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pontieri, comments or questions at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So first, I want to thank staff for kind of taking this by the horns and rolling with it. I know I had brought this up as far as looking at what other cities are doing to get revenue specifically to arts and culture. And so I really thank you for the work that you've done and, and put into this. I am with Councilman Clufus in the aspect of looking to commercial development over $1 million. I think the city of Sarasota has a really good structure here where it's a small percentage. But when we're looking at these large developments, it ends up being a good chunk of change. And so that's what I would ask for consensus from my colleagues as far as having staff kind of move forward with going that route and getting us a more detailed workup of what that ordinance could look like. Because if we look further on in the presentation, and, and to note, you know, if you look further on in the presentation, there's a spreadsheet of a ton of cities in Florida that have done similar things like this, and we're really behind the eight ball on this. So I think that it's good that we're doing it. I think we should move expeditiously on it. But you can see there's some exceptions that some of these other cities have put into. place so that things like affordable housing are not affected by, you know, by this extra, what is essentially an impact fee, so that it doesn't really affect affordable housing in a negative way. So I think that, you know, high level, the Sarasota ordinance is a really good direction to go, but then in order to kind of really tailor this ordinance to the city of Palm Coast, we should look at some of these exceptions that some of these other cities have and make sure that, you know, we're considering all of these things. The one question that I had was, because it was a little unclear, James, you said that in six point six, seven years, we can start to see actual net revenues from the solar going into arts and culture if that's the direction we decide to go. And I also agree that we should put the, the solar monies into arts and culture. When will that six point six, seven years hit for us?
Can you repeat the question, I'm sorry?
Yeah, when, when, what year will, can we expect to see that ROI? Because it says six point seven years, but is it two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six? When is it?
It would be...
I think it's twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, so that's quite a ways away. I mean, we can't really rely on those monies now. So I think that the sooner we move on a ordinance similar to that of Sarasota, and we look to some of these other cities for a more structured ordinance that has those built-in exceptions and things like that, I think the better. I am, at this time, because we don't have dedicated funding, I can't say that I'm in support of raking out a specific arts and culture division from Parks and Rec or really adjusting the structure for Parks and Rec at all at this time. That's going to cost more money, because we know Parks and Rec monies come from our general fund, which is attached to our millage rate. So I can't support that at this time. I think it is something we should consider for the future, but I would like consensus or to at least see what my colleagues have to say about moving forward with an ordinance that does dedicate these, a very small percentage of development, a commercial development over a million dollars.
Councilwoman, you just have to help me with the last statement, I'm, I'm hearing a conflict. I understand the desire to dedicate, but the piece before it, I'm not, I'm not clear on what we, what you're suggesting you would not like to commit to right now.
So at the end of the presentation, there was the option one and the option two, to either separate an arts and culture department from the Parks and Rec Department, or, or an option two to reorganize. And what I'm saying is, it looks like these would, both of these options would take more monies, nearly a half a million for an option two, and over a half a million for option one. So what I'm saying is that this time, I can't support either one of those options and think that the structure should just stay as it is right now, because we just don't have the money to support either one of these options right now.
So I, just help me with this. So if we were to dedicate a percentage to these development projects that exceed whatever the threshold is, I guess how would we administer that funding? It seems to me that those options are the way that you actually administer the funding then. I'm just trying to understand that. And I'm all for the contribution from the developers, because I think we all can relate this directly to the same comments we make about, let's say, the school district. It's the more we invest in the arts and culture and history piece, the more valuable our city becomes, not just for the residents, but for, for the future. No question about it. So I would certainly be in favor of the investment from the development community in that for the future, but I guess then the question becomes, let's assume that we do have consensus on committing this percentage that staff will come back to us and, and detail and confirm, then I'll have that lingering question, how do we actually allocate it, use it, or how do we make it do what we want it to do?
I guess what I'm envisioning until we can, until we have somewhat of a kitty built up, is it going to Parks and Rec and then essentially having a separate line item in their budget, somewhat similar, I guess, to what they have for like the golf course for arts, culture, and history. Now, I don't know if that's possible, I would leave that within the purview of Parks and Rec in Helena, but if that's possible, I would like Parks and Rec to manage that for at least two years until we can look at the budget and say, okay, now we've built up enough monies to actually break this out or re-categorize it. Because like I said, at this time, we're scraping for dollars right now specifically to fund public safety, which I think has to be prioritized over arts and culture. So half a million dollars is nothing to shake a stick at. So that, you know, if it's possible for them to handle those monies as a separate line item for a couple of years while we build up that fund, that would be my preference.
And I, like, I think you also referenced that there's going to be some additional presentations that we're going to hear fairly soon, which might help us through that. So based on, Councilman Clufis, did you want to make another comment before we?
Sure, I would absolutely support what Councilwoman Potieri was talking about. I wanted to thank staff for working with me in these meetings and such. One thing that I was looking at when we went through the different cities, Sarasota specifically, I think what we should have is also verbiage that mandates a certain percentage of the money actually is, is real tangible money, instead of allowing these developments to put one hundred percent of their contribution, contribution into development on-site so that it becomes more tangible for the city, so that we can allocate the dollars how we see fit, and not necessarily because they have one piece of art that, you know, they value at half a million dollars, that it absolves them from this obligation. So with that added to Councilwoman Potieri's original consensus ask, I think I'm totally on board for that.
So, Councilwoman Potieri, would you just do me a favor, just restate the, the consensus item, the commitment, so that we're clear? I do believe we have consensus here, I just want you to restate it for me if you would.
Sure, Mayor, and I agree with you, Councilman Clufis. I think that this should be something that the entire city should be able to enjoy and not be limited to art being on private development sites, so I appreciate your effort there. So I would ask for consensus that staff come back to us with an ordinance that models the city of Sarasota's ordinance, and, and just present us with kind of a bevy of these exclusions that are in the packet that some of the other cities have implemented into their ordinances, just so that we can look at specific exclusions we would like in the ordinance, such as affordable housing, so that in doing this, we're not putting another cost on things like affordable housing, and then, you know, obviously hurting that intent in the affordable housing purview as well. So that, that's what I would ask for consensus on.
And I believe we have consensus, I would only add one other thing to it for staff. If you could also kind of just identify without going through the whole process of some other cities that were of similar size.
Yep.
That, just as a reference or as a footnote. So I do believe we have consensus. City Manager, you good with the direction that you have?
Yes, we'll begin working with legal on drafting the ordinance and getting it to you soon.
Very good, thank you. All right, James, thank you for your presentation. How does this roll into the next presentation now? We've moved to item number, number three, which would be a resolution, and Counselor, I guess I'll have to have you read that in for me if you would.
Resolution two zero two four dash XX, approving an agreement between the city of Palm Coast and the Flagler County Cultural Council for the administration of the cultural art grant program.
All right, well, good morning, Mayor and City Council, James Hess, Director of Parks and Recreation. Before I have Nancy come up and speak, I just give a little bit of history about the grant program that we're discussing today. So since two thousand and two, the city has offered the Cultural Arts Financial Assistance Matching Grant Program. This grant program was administered through the Leisure Services Committee. This committee was sunsetted around five years ago, and since then, city staff and Parks and Recreation staff have been the administers of the grant through ranking and voting on the grant amount that each organization has been, has been awarded for their events. So last year, staff got together and we kind of realized that the art organizations are growing, they're doing awesome events, bringing more things to our city, and they are growing. So it was agreed that maybe this grant process should be refreshed and maybe have an oversight by a team of art professionals and enthusiasts. And so that is why we're here today. We have Ms. Nancy Crouch and Ms. J., Ms. J., Mr., sorry, Jay Shear from the Flagler County Cultural Council, and they're going to do a quick presentation, and then what, at the end, we're just obviously looking for any questions, and we're looking for approval to advance this contract or agreement.
Thank you, and welcome, both of you.
Thank you, James, and Council for allowing this.
Nancy, do me a favor, just pull that up there, just so people can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to present what we call the reimagined cultural arts grant program. But first of all, I'd like to say kudos to you, James, and I know Lauren and the Council for coming up with some really wonderful arts initiatives that I know you've been calling around for a while, but it's great to see them on paper now and seeing a plan. So thank you for that. We've been busy, so you want to flip for me?
Sure.
Okay. So first of all, who are we, what are we? We're the Flagler County Cultural Council, also known as FC3. Our mission is to advocate, support, and foster collaboration for the arts and humanities. And we are made up of a board comprised of members of the community representing arts, history, and culture. Right now, we have a history position available.
And a target-rich environment from which to choose.
So our Board of Directors make up right now, myself, Jay, Danielle Anderson as Secretary, Julia Trullo is our treasurer, she represents CRT Theater, Denise Garcia is a director, she represents Palm Coast Garden Club, Pam Richardson is an adjunct member, Lawson Glazer Green is an award-winning artist, Greg Philman is one of our directors, he also represents kind of like the film industry in the area. And our Board of County Commissioners who sit on our meetings is Commissioner Leann Pennington and David Sullivan, and of course, the mayor comes to our meetings on a regular basis. Thank you for that, Mayor. The Flagler County Cultural Council initiatives. We were designated by the Board of County Commissioners as the local arts agency for Flagler County. We participated in an eighteen-month survey, the, in the Americans for the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study. This is Flagler County's results. This was a nationwide survey, so if you're ever interested in delving down into the real nitty-gritty of what goes on in the county arts and culture-wise, we've got the stats. It's amazing, the stats on this is really quite amazing. But there's a couple of things I'd like to point out, and one is that the survey respondents in Flagler County, sixty-eight point five percent of the forty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-one not-for-profit arts and culture attendees were residents. Thirty-one point five percent were non-residents. And of course, the non-residents spent a lot more money to get here, so they averaged one hundred and five percent more than the local attendees do. So that was basically fifty-nine point, fifty-nine dollars and nineteen cents versus twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents. There's an economic value, as I know you all know. In addition to that, we secured fifty thousand dollars this year to Flagler County graduating high school students. We gave five five-thousand-dollar awards out this year, and we're saving twenty-five thousand for next year to do the same. These scholarship recipients are pursuing careers in film director, graphic designer, architect, music education, and an actor. So there's a broad spectrum of the arts that are being reflected in these educational grants, and we were very thrilled to be able to do that for our graduating high school seniors. We have an application pending for the two thousand and twenty-six LAA grant through the state of Florida. We've created a strategic plan, this was a year-long process, another year-long process, to identify and drive initiatives moving forward. We, our discussions are underway to create a mural project in Bonnell, and we have discussions underway with Daytona State College for an oral history project. So continuing on our initiatives, we continue the public art turtle trail. That has really quite exploded, and we need a turtle for the new Southern Rec Center. I can see a Liori Niemann sports painting turtle there. Collaborated with the Flagler County Education Foundation this year on the Great Minds Summer Program at the Carver Center. This was, we went to them and said, how can we integrate this public art into the schools? And Teresa Rizzo and her staff got together, they said, hey, we're going to start this Great Minds Summer Program in a few weeks, let's start it there as a pilot. It went great. The students went on field trips to see some of the turtles, and then they went back and they did projects, they did dioramas, they did little, you know, habitats, and they painted turtles, so they learned about arts and science. So this was just a little documentation on, this is the one in front of City Hall, this is the one right here, and this is, this is, this is the one in front of City Hall, and this is the one in front of the health office.
Who is it that's here at City Hall?
City Hall is right here.
No, who?
Oh, J.J. Graham did the...
What's the name?
Oh, this is, this is our...
Nadia.
Yeah, our Edgar Dalgaw turtle, and that's our Norman Rockwell turtle. So we continue to create the Turtle Trail. The Turtle Trail not only is part of that Great Minds Summer Program, they came back to us and said, we want to integrate it into the academic program. So the whole Flagler County school system at the elementary level is now going to do part of their arts and sciences curriculum, will incorporate the Turtle Trail into their, to their educational program, which I'm thrilled about, so I'm happy to hear that. Also, coming up, is our first book coming out in, I think, November. It's a hardback and a softback book on the first twenty-two turtles, and it'll be volume one, I hope, just volume one. And so that will be available, we will, it's totally sponsored, underwritten by a local chiropractor, and we will give a stash of them to our, our neighboring and our company historical societies and all of our partner organizations that they can sell as a revenue source for themselves. Got to keep the price the same though, Kathy.
I just have to comment, stop you there just for a second. So you've taken a concept with the Turtle Trail, you've created an activity for, not just for, you know, our, our residents, but also for the kids, and then you've captured it all in the form of a book, which I believe is, a lot of that input probably comes from the school kids and all of that. So, I mean, that is such a well-rounded effort that I think that deserves special attention. I couldn't, I couldn't be more supportive of that effort.
Thank you. The book is going to be amazing, it's going to have pictures of all the turtles and the sponsors and the artists, and I think you did the intro for it. In addition to that, we have a gentleman who wants to do coloring books and activity books related to the Turtle Trail. This isn't, this is just an example of what he does, but, so he came to us and said, oh, we can do some of these things, so, so look for that in the future. So like I said, the Turtle Trail, the public art, has really exploded, and we're happy about that. So going back to our strategic plan, even though this is a very, very thick document, we, we narrowed it down and we kind of filtered it, and these are, we created three pillars to create our, our initiatives moving forward. Our pillar one is support. We want to provide financial and promotional opportunities for members and students, if we want to implement a granting program, we want to support arts education through scholarship, which we are doing, we want to implement out-of-market and in-market advertising programs to drive awareness and increase visibility. Pillar two, like I said, we distilled these down a lot, is advocacy. Maintain FC3's status as a local arts agency, regular engagement with local and state officials, educate and activate the local community on advocacy issues. And then our final pillar is foster collaboration. We encourage the use of FC3's master calendar and quarterly roundtables for arts and culture leaders, and connect artists to develop new events and possibilities. So the grant purpose, go back, is to encourage and provide funding to community arts and culture organizations, artists, theater, film, dance, historians, and musicians for programs and events. The reimagined grant program will consist of tier one, not-for-profit 501(c)(3) organizations, programs and events to take place in the city of Palm Coast and local schools, events and programs to take place by September per fiscal year funding cycle, and a panel review committee shall process applications through a rigorous scoring system. And it'll be a system somewhat like the state does on their cultural arts grants, but much more simplified. Two, two, this is where I'd like to reimagine this, open it up to individual artists, historians, musicians, to include but not limited to mural artists, artist workshops, artist exhibitions, music concert series, film, we want to have a film festival coming up, and they're not really an art, not-for-profit organization, but there's a group... organization, but there's a group of people who want to put on a film festival. Gary Lubai and the Palm Coast Songwriters Festival is a very good example of this. Yeah, so, theater, dance, historical initiatives like the Oral History Project. So, the grant impact. FC3 requests a minimum of $100,000 per year, a three-year commitment from the city to create a robust, all-inclusive opportunity to qualified projects. Past funding has been severely deficient in providing any meaningful impact to projects. FC3 hopes to provide through the grant initiative awards of substance, much like our $5,000 scholarships that we gave out to students. That was a substantial award. They felt like they were winning the lottery. We want funding to be used to offset expenses related to the proposed project. The FC3 Board may solicit additional expertise in grant reviews, however, the Board is currently comprised of the professionals with the knowledge for such decisions. If an organization applies for a grant that an FC3 member represents, that board member will just recuse themselves from the review process. FC3 will advertise, manage, and review grants, acknowledge recipients, and process payments from the FC3 bank account as an efficient, streamlining, timely, and accountability measure. Grant to be labeled as the City of Palm Coast Cultural Arts Grant. FC3 to receive a 10% service fee from the city for managing this important grant program. That's pretty standard across grant-making organizations. FC3 will provide the City of Palm Coast the grantees and celebrate them at a city council meeting. The City of Palm Coast logo and the FC3 logo will be on all marketing and advertising of the grants. The City of Palm Coast logo and the FC3 logo will be included on all marketing and advertising by the grantee. And FC3 to provide a full accounting of grant dispersments to the City of Palm Coast at the end of each funding cycle. Approved grant applications to be posted on FC3 website for public to see. So, I want to thank you for this partner, I almost did that in three minutes. Thank you for this partnership opportunity. I really appreciate everything that we've been doing along with the city up to now. And of course, we have one more announcement, and that is, we're introducing MAX. MAX is going to be unveiled August 21st at 10:00 a.m. next week at Marineland. The artist is Cheryl Fletcher Kuhn, and TD Bank is sponsoring this, so we hope to see everyone out at Marineland at 10:00 o'clock on next Wednesday, I believe it is.
So, Nancy, help me with this if you would, before the press or the media has a field day. The request today is a number that is significantly larger than either last year or even the prior year from that, but this is a very different approach to the arts and cultural and historical initiative. So, I think it would be unfair for somebody to suggest that the percentage increase from what we had done in the past should be assigned to this, what you've presented today, because of what I'm hearing is a very different approach to the initiative. I mean, is that, am I correct there?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the only other piece, and this is for city council members, I need to, and maybe staff will come back to us, to help clarify the relationship between the city and the county in this. I'm just not clear on, if city council decides to participate, I'm not sure how that works along with the county. I don't need the answer right now, but...
Well, we...
Is there an overlap? How does that...
Well, FC3 has a service agreement with the county.
Yes.
The county provides us funding, $40,000 a year, an office, you know, part-time staff that works for the TDC right now. So, we're all volunteer. We're all volunteers. So, right now, and the county paid for this study.
So, this would be over and above whatever the county is doing...
Yes.
But overseen...
This is specific to grants.
Okay. I'm struggling with this, Nick, help me out with this, in terms of the city's relationship with the county, if any, or maybe there's no relationship there.
Sure. Well, I think we're asking to be a critical partner in this collaboration, so I think it kind of trickles down. Lauren, did you have something to...
Yes, this is, Mayor, if you will, this is, as Mr. Hurst elaborated at the beginning of the presentation, the city has had a cultural arts program since 2002, and previously it was done by a Leisure Services Advisory Committee that the city had established. That group was sunsetted back in 2019, and since then, staff has been managing the grants. And with the opportunity to collaborate on arts and culture and future initiatives, we reached out to FC3 to see if they would be interested in doing the city's grant process for us. So, it would take out the responsibility of staff, let the professionals be able to contribute and give those, disperse those grant funds throughout the community.
This is a complete re-imagination of the arts, culture, and historical initiative.
Yes, and furthermore, just a continued collaboration with arts and culture and our groups herein.
Okay.
I would say that this is, has potential, and this kind of coincides with the previous item we talked about, where if we're going to make a financial commitment, we should make a dedicated financial commitment, and potentially, this is where we can dedicate the solar funds to, or the situations that we were talking about, to bring back to council about the Sarasota-type relationship where we have a dedicated funding source from construction over a million dollars.
Well, and provides you continuity, so we're not, each year, depending on inflation rates and whatever's happening, are not consistent with our investment or contribution to the arts and culture, because they're never going to be less needed. They're only going to be more needed as we move forward. Councilwoman, comment at this time?
No comments.
Okay. Councilwoman Pontieri, can you comment on the presentation at this time?
Well, thank you to Nancy for coming before council. I appreciate everything that FC3 is doing, and I support the program. I do have a few requests. One, I'm curious as to whether or not the grant applications can be made public record, and the panel review notes also public record, just since these will be taxpayer dollars. And then, I'm also wondering if we can make, I know there was a note about FC3 advertising, managing, reviewing the grants, and then also processing the payments from a bank account. Will those also be made public record, again, since we are using taxpayer dollars?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. The only comment, you know, other comment that I guess I have is, you know, obviously right now, we're looking at increasing this request. We don't, I don't think we have these extra dollars anywhere. I know that we were looking at reducing the amount we're paying to the sheriff's contract by a certain amount of money. I'll look to the city manager to see if those extra dollars have been earmarked at all, to see if we can move some of those over to this. I just don't know at this point. I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Plufus, that I think the dedicated funding source in the future can definitely go towards this larger amount. I just don't know where we, where we get that money right now. And then my last comment is, I am not in agreement with paying an extra 10% service fee. I think that whatever amount we give to FC3, you all determine what you want to do with that. If you want to use $90,000 for grants and $10,000 as the management fee, then that's within your purview, but I can't agree to the, the actual request plus another 10% on top of that. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. That was my board request, and I'm bringing it to you.
And that's, that's 100% fine. I'm just, just giving my input. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager, do you need a comment at this time? I think there's a kind of a question from the councilwoman on the floor, so are you ready, or does that need to come back when, when...
We will have that prepared for you, Mayor and City Council, as we navigate those budget scenarios that you requested at your August 27th business meeting.
Okay. So, I mean, you have a general consensus on the need for this initiative to move forward. Some of the important nuts and bolts have to be tightened or refined, and I think obviously it's a, it's a purposeful and a correct comment to say that the funding is not yet identified. Some of it will certainly be available to us along a timeline, so perhaps the thought of a tiered approach, a phased approach as we go forward, is something that staff might want to bring back, to be able to get a consistent, long-term initiative in place and approved by the City of Palm Coast. And is there any of this discussion that needs to be shared with the county, or we're just solo on these decisions?
We have a great relationship with the county. I can let the county administrator know, as well as the Director of TDC, Ms. Lou Kosick, so I'll keep them informed.
Okay. And I would ask the presenters, are there any questions you have of us as we kind of move this process forward?
I don't have any questions. I just have comments, and that's just, thank you. Thank you for taking this seriously.
Sure.
Because we do, as volunteers, we take this seriously.
You know, I invite you to speak to each of the city council members individually, certainly be available, should they have any additional questions for that?
Sure.
That would be wonderful. So, with that, thank you for your efforts, and we would look forward to the unveiling, is that the correct word?
Yes, the unveiling.
The presentation of our new friend...
MAX.
MAX, coming up very soon.
Based on the pop artist Peter MAX.
Very good. All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to next item, which also resolutions. So, councillor, I guess I'll ask you to, if you would, please add that, oh, I'm sorry. Let me open up this item just for the public, so I don't combine it with the others. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the presentation that we just heard and discussed?
Mr. Mayor, we also didn't do public comment for the presentation before that, so they kind of went together, so it might be a good idea.
Okay, the same thing.
Got to redo the presentation.
So, regarding the last two, the presentation and the resolution, would there be anyone that's interested in addressing me at this time? Seeing none, then I'll close public comment on those two issues, and we'll move forward now with the next resolution, which I'd like you to read in, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, are you, so I guess there was a resolution, is no one bringing a motion or anything on that today? The prior resolution?
Well, it's a workshop, so I think what they were looking for is direction. I think staff has been given sufficient direction from city council members to refine and come back, and you've got enough direction to move forward, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor.
Good, okay.
All right. Next resolution. Resolution 2024-XX, approving a master service agreement with the Palm Coast Historical Society and Museum, Inc.
Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry, Kathy. I promise this is my last one. So, today's presentation, I have a few slides, but I think I'll let Kathy talk really quickly. But this is just approving the master services agreement with the Palm Coast Historical Society. So, Kathy, if you want to go ahead and stuff.
Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for granting the Palm Coast Historical Society an opportunity to request an increase in funding from $3,000 to $10,000, as outlined in our proposed service agreement. As the City of Palm Coast approaches the 25th anniversary of incorporation, we're happy to be partnering with city staff to raise awareness about this significant milestone. We plan to attend various events throughout the community, including the Senior Games in September, the anniversary celebration in Town Center in October, and participate in social media posts in the coming weeks. When Jim Canfield was elected our first mayor in December 1999, he immediately began to focus on preserving the historic documents the city inherited from international telephone and telegraph. Within months, the first city council formed the Historical Society with guidance from Dick Kelton, our first city manager. Art Dyke, a retired history professor, and Margaret Davy, an active real estate agent, were appointed co-historians to these volunteer positions. Art served in that position for 24 years, until finally retiring in January of this year. At the age of 90, he continues to volunteer as a docent in the museum on the first Saturday of each month, along with his wife Louise. For over two decades, these and other volunteers collected, catalogued, and curated our local history to the best of their ability. Today, the office is lined with file cabinets, bookshelves, and wire racks filled with newspaper clippings, newsletters, marketing brochures, photographs, cassette tapes, and miscellaneous memorabilia. Had it not been for their efforts, I would not be standing before you now, sharing what I've learned about our community's past, because it likely would have been lost. Many of the Historical Society's original leadership and the first 100 charter members were part of the Home Rule Coalition that campaigned for incorporation, which passed with a 60% yes vote. They not only fought to make history, they dedicated themselves to preserving it. While the approaching milestone is cause for celebration, it also signals a time to pause and reflect as we witness the end of an era. Since 2018, when I began to volunteer, having moved here in 2017, I watched as many of those original volunteers and society members have passed away, moved away, or resigned for health reasons. Their level of community service has been extraordinary, but we can no longer rely on them to fill much-needed positions of leadership, or organize fundraisers to plug the gaps in our operating budget. We need to find another path forward. For that reason, the City of Palm Coast Historical Society is turning to you for help. As our elected officials, we are asking you to meet, if not exceed, the level of care and concern for keeping our past alive that our first mayor and city council exhibited. We ask that you not only vote to increase our funding as part of the city budget, but also promote the Historical Society and Museum as a valuable and necessary component of our community. PCHS currently has approximately 200 members in a city with a population of just over 100,000. 25 years ago, the society attracted 100 charter members when the population was approximately 1/3 of its current size. This suggests to me that we need a louder megaphone to spread the message that historic preservation is a valuable component of our community. We need to appoint another historian or two. We need a museum director. We need docents and other volunteers, and we need an increase in our grant funding to enable us to hire the professionals required to provide the technical services many of us do not possess. Palm Coast once was, and probably still is, the largest master-planned community in the state of Florida, and currently one of the fastest-growing. We now have over half a century of history as a community, and a quarter of a century as a city. The baton is being passed to the next generation of civic-minded citizens to follow in the path established by our founders. Please assist us with this important transition. I have a copy of our budget, if you'd like to see it. There are a few modifications. It's a proposed budget, and if you look at the expenses page, you'll see that some of them are very fixed expenses, like carbonite backup, Bluehost web development, constant contact email, et cetera, et cetera. The items listed under museum improvements, and which would also include office improvements, had a projected amount of $2,500. We have not attempted to spend that amount of money out of our budget, but instead have opted to take the grassroots approach, which we've been operating under for the last 25 years. Almost every item, with the exception of computers and printers, are hand-me-down items from other departments within the city. I recently acquired an old desk from the school department that I was able to source with the help of Dave Friedman. They basically described that facility as the graveyard of equipment, but I was happy to have them... the graveyard of equipment, but I was happy to have them deliver the desk to us so that we wouldn't have to spend the $2,500 out of our budget to acquire a new desk. And we could hopefully transfer some of that money to the cost of paying for the new part-time admin assistant that we've hired out of our own savings. I need to point out that it's been individuals who've contributed the most to the operation of this organization for the last 25 years. Connie Horvath, whose name you may or may not know, was a past charter member, the original secretary to Dan Cooper, who was one of the supervisors who worked for ITT and operated out of the old Lehigh cement plant. She left $20,000 to the society when she passed away in 2015. That money has never been spent and has instead been accruing interest all this time. We are now tapping into that fund to help pay for our part-time admin because those of us who have stepped up to try to keep this organization going do not have the computer skills necessary to produce the impressive slide programs and Constant Contact web designs that other organizations are able to provide because they do have the skills. So I'm asking you to please place the emphasis on this organization that it deserves. As one of the fastest-growing cities, one of the youngest cities, historic preservation deserves your support. Thank you.
Kathy, are you taking questions from us now? If I may, you just go ahead and give them the clerk and she'll hand them out.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay. Thank you. The, I certainly understand most of the line items in the budget. I guess my question becomes, are you, are you asking first of all enough and are you asking for investment in increasing your membership? In other words, I hear the need for operational costs, understandable. What I'm not, I don't think understanding enough of is the outreach to increase membership because I think that that's critical to sustainability for the future. An increase probably both in, I don't know what your current dues schedule is right now, you know, we can talk about that later, but it would be important to me to know that you had a way or a method or initiative or a project to dramatically increase your membership. Because if you look at the membership that you once enjoyed way back when as a percentage of the population of the community, it was certainly significantly higher than it is today. I don't know that we'll ever get back to that same percentage with the growth that you referenced, but we could certainly probably hope to have more folks become members, which will help sustain the organization. So I would just look forward to that as being a part of your ask.
I think that is what I meant by a louder megaphone. We need the city staff and city council to help promote the importance of the organization and the fact that we have a small museum. In the back of Holland Park, every single day, we meet someone who says that they didn't know we have a Historical Society and they didn't know we have a museum. I've talked to city staff about the fact that from the, approaching the building from the back, it doesn't look like a museum. In fact, it looks like an extension of the maintenance facility because what you see is a driveway, a garage door, a pile of mulch, air conditioners. And if you park your car or don't park your car and keep going, you never turn around to see the mural or the turtle that we financed, that I helped finance. I am one of the turtle sponsors, along with another board member. We did it specifically because we wanted to get on the turtle trail because nobody knew we were there. And we thought perhaps if they're following the turtle trail, they'll accidentally look up and see the sign that says Historical Society Museum. And it's worked to a certain degree. And yes, we did partner with FC3 when they had the children come from the Carver Center for their Turtle Trail Party at the pavilion in Holland Park. And our part-time admin gave out coloring sheets to the kids with Garfield images on it so that maybe the idea that history is important sticks with them as they grow older. And we've also recently been in talks with Dr. Nancy Duke, who's a professor at Daytona State College and teaches the students who are in the dual enrollment program, to see if they want to contribute some of their service hours to working with the Historical Society. That has not been launched yet because school hasn't started, but we hope that in August and September, when they start their classes, that they'll be interested in working with us. We'd love to have, you know, each and every one of you become a member. An individual member is $20 a year. The lifetime fee is $300 a year. We've annually dropped off the newsletter, which contains information about what we've done in the previous year. And each and every one of those contains an application form. And we don't just give it to the city council, we give it to the city manager and the staff. And the results of that plea have been minimal, and I don't know why.
Okay. So I'm proud to say that I am a member. I certainly will take a look at the lifetime membership. I wasn't completely aware that that exists, but.
You too could have one of these lapel pins. We provide those to lifetime members.
And I would, as one city council member, I would encourage each of us to consider whether or not we might suggest that, you know, increasing the membership to a level that is appropriate for the wants and desires, but all that they provide to both our current residents and the new residents that are coming is something that I would hope each of us would consider. So council member comments, I mean, listen, this is the history of our of our city, the best of the best in Florida, so let's have it.
For sure. I think it's up to us to make sure that the city is providing everything we can to get the membership levels back on track compared to when, you know, we originated. I think the fact that if we can get more membership is going to solve a lot of these issues, in my opinion. And if we have to do whatever we have to do as a city to support that, I'm all about it. I just want to thank not only Kathy, but the entire Historical Society, everything that you guys do, every, every person that says, I didn't even know this thing was here. That is now an advocate for, hey, did you know that there was a museum back in the back of Holland Park? And I don't disagree with you that. It almost looks like a concession place back there. It's not exactly, you know, a screaming museum, but you guys have done tremendous with what you've been given. So thank you guys for keeping the legacy going. And I think whatever the city can do to help your adoption levels reach the levels that they were prior, I think that's how we get the longevity out of this program, which it deserves. So thank you guys for everything that you do.
I would go further. I would issue a challenge that each city council member, I don't know if I'm permitted to do that, so councillor, if I'm saying something wrong, but I would challenge myself with identifying or bringing at least 10 lifetime members to the membership team, you know, certainly before the end of this current year, and not stopping at 10, but trying to exceed that as well. It's like, I think that if we challenge ourselves, we could more easily go out and talk about promoting this, you know, throughout the community.
I really appreciate that challenge. It's important to recognize that everything we do is free to the citizens of this community. We don't charge admission to the museum when those few folks who do wander by want to come in. We don't charge a fee for people to come to any of our lectures. Particularly, our senior citizens have loved having something to do on a Saturday morning that doesn't cost them any money. And we have a very steady, reliable, faithful crowd that comes and they get to see all their friends and have a cup of coffee. Oh, and while I'm at it, mentioning the refreshments that we're cutting back on that line item, we no longer offer bottles of water, plastic bottles of water, for two reasons. One, it costs money. And two, it's not environmentally sustainable. So we're looking towards sustainability on a lot of different levels. And we appreciate whatever you can do to help us. Thank you.
Good. Councillor Hamerheder?
Yes, I'd like to thank all of the members of the Historical Society for what you do. And I know, because I have been to the Historical Society and visited, I thank you so much for preserving the history of the city of Palm Coast because before I came there, I had no idea of the great history that lies here within Palm Coast and the history that is yet to come. So thank you so much for what you do. I really appreciate it and I'm looking forward to becoming a member.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you.
I did just check my email. My membership lapsed in June, so I will be renewed by the end of today.
Good. So the challenge is on. Councillor woman Potieri.
While I have the microphone, can I make one more comment?
Please, go ahead.
I would like to also emphasize that we're not only focusing on the ITT portion of our history. And coming up on October 11th, you'll be hearing about this probably more from Parks and Rec, but I'll tell you now, we will be unveiling our very first Florida state historical marker that's going to be installed at Long Creek Preserve. It's to commemorate Hernandez Landing, which archaeologists discovered in a 2008 study. And it will hopefully be the first of many because ITT and their founders were not the first people to ever occupy these lands. And in fact, you know, of course, we all know it predates the colonial plantation era too, but that is one portion of our history that we can, we can emphasize along with Old Kings Road and, you know, other aspects.
So I will take it upon myself, and I hope I'm not going to get sliced and diced for this, to, I guess through the city manager, invite each city council member to consider perhaps finding a turtle that might find a home at that preservation site so that we get it on the map, so that people will become aware of it and get to enjoy the history that it represents.
Well, there is a turtle along the canal opposite the, what was once the yacht club, but the pathway to the Long Creek Dock, and that is at the other end of the park. But yes, there is some turtle cultural arts focus in that area.
Very good. Okay. And before I leave, Councillor woman Potieri, can you take us out with any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I want to thank Kathy and all of your volunteers. You all are so awesome and I greatly appreciate your contribution to our city and its history. I 100% support the increase in the grant amount. And to the extent that we're able to extend a dedicated funding source that we discussed earlier to include the history of Palm Coast, I would like to do so.
And just as a, thank you, Councillor woman Potieri. And just as a reference, I won't embarrass people, I won't identify them, but you have a collection of founders of our city, which are sitting here at the meeting today. And we appreciate their taking the time out of their schedule to come and sit here and visit with us today and show the support for, literally from the very beginning. So ladies and gentlemen, but thank you very much for coming here to support the presentation today. Very good. James, any further specific?
No, I think I got it all.
That's enough for you to move forward?
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Did you manage her good?
Yes.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We now move to next resolution regarding the.
I believe this is the discussion on having workshops, Mayor, additional workshops on your calendar.
Okay. So that's an administrative, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Shear, just before you run out, hold on, I will open up for public comment. Is there any last comment? I think the presentation was pretty complete, but I would offer you the opportunity, and I have one gentleman who's going to take advantage of it. So thank you for public comment.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hello. Good. Can you hear me? Good. Good morning. My name is Richard Hamilton. I'm a resident of Flagler County and a strong interest in arts and history. I moved here 20 years ago. My previous history, you know, was with ITT, nothing to do with Palm Coast. I keep stressing, don't blame me. But I do have a strong interest in what ITT did here and what happened here before. Probably in those 20 years, you know, I run my own local foundations and I've probably given about a million dollars of contributions to arts, culture, and history. A year ago, I stood in front of you with a quarter in my hand and said, you know, that's all you give to the arts, one quarter per person, and you should be ashamed of yourself. Well, I'm glad to hear today a much more vibrant discussion on supporting the arts. I'd like to thank James and Lauren too for their support for the arts in not just Palm Coast, but throughout the county. I would suggest you also might want to look at not only the Echo Grant, which is a very strong model that I would have loved to have seen in Palm Coast and Flagler County, but also the St. John's Cultural Council and the Marion County Cultural Council. When I and four other citizens were helping set up the Flagler County Cultural Council, we invited Jay Bailey-Gifford from Marion to come and speak to us. They started 20 years ago with their horse trail, Horse Fever Trail. It was a very similar concept to the Turtle Trail, but a calat was based on horses. And that set them up and created a whole lot of funding. So we'll probably have more opportunities to talk. I know we're short on time. I'd like to thank Nancy Cratch also for her efforts in the Turtle Trail. Nancy and I sometimes had crossed swords when I was on the auditorium board and she was on the Palm Coast Arts Foundation Board. And we were competing for the same funding or things, but I think she's done a tremendous job in developing that Turtle Trail. Perhaps even you can get Flagler County to change the potato on their symbol to a turtle or something like that. That would be a good way to go forward. So, and then the third thing, I just wanted to comment, is thanks to Kathy Reichert of the, for stepping into the show, Shoes of Art Dyke, and thanks to Nikki, who worked with me on setting up the Cultural Council. I would like, as one personal project, be working with them and with you on creating a Palm Coast Historic District, not just a historic museum, but we have a district that goes from Long's Landing down to Waterfront Park to Old Kings Road, which could make one a very good basis for a historic district designation and could form the basis for a Trail Town designation as well for our Viking Trail. There are funds available for that.
Richard, thank you very much. And I certainly will ask for some additional information on what historic district entails. So I, and I'm sure each council member will find some information so that they're more fluent in what that concept is. So thank you for your comment.
Anything I can do to help on both.
All right. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time? Seeing none, I'll close public comment on the item. And we will move down the agenda to the next item. And the next item is, where are we now?
Workshops.
So that's a discussion. So city manager, is that you with dates?
Well, this is for council's pleasure to discuss having additional workshops. Historically, right now, we have the first Tuesday as a business meeting in the evening, the second Tuesday is a workshop, and the third Tuesday is a business meeting as well. We do introduce special budget workshops during March through August on that fourth Tuesday, where it's specifically on the budget or your strategic action plan. And I believe the request came from Ms. Potieri last week at your business meeting to have that fourth meeting, the workshop, be a more regular, permanent basis so that you can work through items before the business meeting. And our workshop items are getting lengthy and it's, I'll let her take it from there.
So, well, there goes the part-time description of the work. Councillor woman Potieri, would you like to comment as we begin this discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. And I take.
And I take incredible pause with calling it part-time anyways. Lord knows, I don't take this as a part-time job. And I don't feel many of us do. I think that the fourth workshop a month is really necessary at this time. You know, we're not a small city anymore. We have a lot going on, a lot of change. We're very dynamic. I mean, just, you know, looking at the ordinance that we're considering for the dedicated funding source for the arts, you can see all the other cities that have already implemented things like this. I think we're really catching up to the times with a lot of other cities just because of our age, you know, being as young as we are. So I think that in order to really dedicate what we need to, to our city and to our residents, the extra workshop is necessary, and I think it'll help cut down too on the length of some of these workshops. I know we get pretty exhausted, and the endurance that's required after six, seven hours to be thinking clearly and making good decisions really starts to dissipate, to be quite honest. And I also think it'll benefit staff as well if we can ensure we're giving them enough time after we give them direction to bring us items that we can really consider seriously and dedicate the time and attention we need to them. I think that that fourth workshop a month is warranted. Or rather, I should say it's second workshop a month, the fourth meeting a month.
Right. Thank you. I just have one question I would be remiss, I think, if I didn't ask. Is there a significant cost to adding a workshop? I'm not aware of it. Is, city manager, I'm not directing that to you.
No, Mayor, and it is something that previous city councils did have in their purview. They did have four meetings a month.
Okay. City council members, I think each of you, we're looking for consensus here. I certainly support the ask. Councilwoman Clufus?
Yeah, for a long while, we did have four meetings a month, and then we kind of found that everything was kind of being handled through our weekly meetings with staff. I would say that it started to get to the point where we could roll the one workshop into one, but then again, we weren't running into like a six, seven-hour workshop every other meeting. So I think it's probably just changing with the times. I have no, I have no problems. I think it's always better to have more meetings and then scale them back instead of trying to go the other way around. So, and I think especially with the potentially, you know, two new council members being elected in this upcoming election, that you have those meetings, and then if you need to adjourn, you know, after 30 minutes, it's fine, but it's better to get them acclimated and not have a seven-hour long haul.
Councilwoman Hyder?
I don't actually, I'm not against having the fourth meeting. However, I think that we all have to consider our other obligations that we're committed to outside of city council because I know I myself do have a lot of other obligations that I'm committed to, and I do still work full-time pretty much in my business. So it's something that I would have to look at, and depending on how much more time is going to be put into having this fourth meeting, I think that I can make a better decision on it for myself. That's for me personally.
Okay. And I, just for consideration, is it possible for this meeting that we're talking about to be kind of a half and half where it would be half workshop, half business so that we could further the business side in terms of votes if it were publicly noticed and all that? It's just, can we have a hybrid or not to make it more efficient, more effective still?
I would need to look into that.
Okay. I'd like to know that to maximize the use of another scheduled meeting of city council members. Councilwoman Potieri, I think you led the charge. I think you have consensus or Councilwoman Hyder wants to do a little more research to make sure that doesn't, it isn't conflicted. Any other final comments regarding this and any direction you'd like to give staff so this can come back appropriately?
Just one last thing. I understand having other commitments and obligations, obviously. I mean, I'm still a full-time attorney and now a full-time mom, and so I get it, and I appreciate my colleagues' permission of me or allowance of me to appear to some of these workshops electronically so that I can care for the little guy. So to Councilwoman Hyder's comment, I think that if maybe these workshops, I don't want us to go to, you know, appearing electronically as a habit or as a practice. I certainly prefer to be there in person, but perhaps the ability to appear electronically for workshops is something that maybe could accommodate schedules a little bit better and alleviate one of Councilwoman, rather, Hyder's concerns. So I don't know if maybe that's an option that we want to discuss as well, because I can definitely appreciate having other obligations, especially right now, and I don't want that to be set aside or not considered. I just think that, you know, if we're really going to get the work of the city done that we need to get done, that the fourth or the second workshop is definitely warranted. But I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, can you bring us back a proposal after you've had a chance to speak to each council member on what you think could work or be, could work with everybody's schedule?
Sure. We can put together a calendar and after a meeting with each council member and then have it on an agenda for approval.
Yeah, have you thought about putting a time limit on these additional workshops, maybe?
That is to your pleasure. If you would like to say workshops for a certain period of time, that is up to you.
So we could put a cap on it?
Yeah, I think that that would make more sense, especially with the obligations that we have already to the city, to our community, and all, and to our own personal lives. I think that, you know, if we're going to have additional meetings, we need to set a time limit on them where we're not running again into further long additional workshops because that could happen.
Sure. I will prepare that and have it on a future agenda for you.
Okay. And that would be up to us to put a cap on a time limit. So that'd be fine. So I think that's a good addition to the discussion. Excellent.
I know that we all put in a lot of time outside of being here today on city council. We are expected to be a lot of other different places, and Mayor, you for one, you're everywhere. We attend a lot of events outside of city council, and the community needs to be aware of that, and I'm sure the staff is aware of that. So I think we really need to take into consideration that we may need to put a cap on our additional workshop meetings.
I appreciate your comments very much. And councillor, you want to make a comment here?
Yeah, based on councilmember Hyder's question, you do have in your council's policies and procedures that all meetings have to be adjourned by 11:00 p.m. So if that is something that you guys want to look at changing, that's something we can look at.
So we could, we could, yes. So Councilwoman Hyder, so don't get nervous. So we could, we could do much better than the 11:00, 11:00 p.m. deal. That's the outset.
Yeah, I was just saying.
And that's not consistent, I don't think, with the thought that you have. I'm with you. I get it, and we will, we will be clear when we next discuss this on capping. And I just want to be clear, we may not want to just cap or change the restriction on how long a meeting can go for this special meeting. We may want to extend that discussion for all meetings and give ourselves the flexibility to put a night cap or a cap on day meetings as well. That'll be up for discussion, and we'll decide that then.
Or maybe a cap on the agenda itself.
Yes.
Yeah, so that we only have a certain amount of items that we discuss on an agenda.
Forecast for a certain amount of time. So I think that's a healthy discussion. I appreciate you bringing it up. Very good. All right, with that, I would open up this item for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to discuss this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment on that item, and we move to our final presentation, which is the Comprehensive Plan Imagine 2050, and staff is going to come up and start the conversation.
Mayor, as staff is preparing to come up, did city council need to take any break today for...
Give me an idea of how long this next presentation might be, right? An hour.
An hour or so?
So this is not a bad time to take a break. Let me just wait till the councilman, I'm sure he'll be okay. I shouldn't do that. We'll wait till he says, "You're good for a break now." 20-minute break?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potieri, would you be okay if we took a 20-minute break in advance of the comp plan? I think it's a good natural transition.
Certainly, Mayor.
Good. Let me just make sure that Councilwoman Clufus is okay with that. And then, it's perfect. It's 11:40. We would come back at noon, just about, and I'll go ahead and speak for Councilman Clufus. We're going to take a break. That's my prerogative. So we'll see you all at noon. So I'll adjourn now, reconvene at 12 o'clock.
So you're going to give this presentation and rehear for further commentary? That works for me.